And that he was on his oxygen stall. And that he had five cups of clam chowder.
Good evening, everyone. This is our Inglewood's City Council Study Session on February 4th, 2019, and it's about 6:01. I know that Councilmember Wink is on her way, otherwise the rest of our council is here. Our first agenda tonight is standard definitions and Finance and Administrative Services Maria Sabata is here to present with her staff on the standard definitions that we've been talking about for a little while here. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Maria Sabata, and I have asked Heather Driscoll to... Are these on?
I think they are. Just pull them close.
There you go. Is that okay? Okay.
They're more high-powered than the little battery ones.
Much better. If I start singing, you know? Just like a singing...
Please do.
Yeah, those are the old ones, I think. We used to have those. We used to sing a lot. No kidding.
I've invited Heather Driscoll to join me tonight in this presentation, so I'll turn it over to Heather, and I'm here for questions along with Heather.
So, we're here to discuss the standard definitions. This is the third time that we've been to a study session, so we're just following up on it. The main objective tonight is to bring forth answers to questions that were posed on November 26th when we last presented. Intention of bringing forward an ordinance on February 19th. A little history. This was first presented to City Council on September 10th in a study session along with the mandatory business licensing, which will not be addressed tonight. There have been a variety of council requests regarding various information since September that we have listed here for reference for your ease if you care to pull that to revisit, or if you have any questions, we can gladly answer those for you tonight. In addition, per the council's request, I met with and presented the information to the Alliance for Commerce in Inglewood as well as the Greater Inglewood Chamber of Commerce. Yeah, I think they're still not as loud as they... Maybe you just need to speak up, too. I'm sorry. It's just a crazy sound thing, so... Okay, well, let me know if it gets better. There you go. Much better. The standard definitions, as a reminder, it's a major collaborative project between all the home rule municipalities here in Colorado, and it is facilitated by Colorado Municipal League. And the objective of it is to create consistent standard definitions across all the home rule jurisdictions for the ease of taxpayers so that they have that continuity. It is not to change the tax base, which is very important. The standard definitions, the main objective of it, by having the consistent definitions will make it less complex for businesses to file, report, and remit local taxes, which therefore leads to voluntary compliance. On the screen, you can see that these are the home rule municipalities that have adopted the standard definitions. We actually had an addition to this since the presentation was prepared back on January 22nd of this year. Simo Springs can also be added to this list that they adopted. So there's only 25 left to adopt, including ourselves. On reviewing the transcript from the November 26th Council Study Session, these were the questions that were brought up. The general... Or, sorry. The Greater Inglewood Chamber of Commerce survey results, as well as their standard definition position of neutral, in addition to what are some of the standard definitions and how does it relate? In addition, how is it benefited? And what legislation was it connected to was brought up multiple times. Our responses to those are, for the Greater Inglewood Chamber of Commerce survey, we've reached out to them multiple times and just recently received some information. It was not what we were hoping to receive, and so we're reviewing that. Again, we were having issues getting any response from the Greater Inglewood Chamber of Commerce regarding the standard definitions, so we will follow up. The standard definitions, the legislation that it was related to was the Senate Concurrent Resolution 14004, which has been provided in your council communication, which was postponed indefinitely in favor of Senate Joint Resolution 14038, which is also provided for your viewing pleasure. We provided the survey to ACE, which was requested back on November 26th. We received three responses, and the first question on that survey was, would standardized definitions be beneficial to you? And all three responses were yes. The three surveys we received are also included in your council communication for tonight. Some other questions that we received is, how does it benefit us? We've addressed that. And then again, the legislation question came up, which I feel that I've addressed. We've provided here an example on how it is beneficial to both taxpayers and ourselves. Currently, our definition for tangible personal property in the Inglewood Municipal Code is corporal personal property. Off the top of your heads, who knows what that means? Show of hands? I'll be honest, more often than not, people have to look it up. When I started here, I definitely Googled it to make sure. The definition per Merriam-Webster's dictionary is having consistent of or relating to a physical material body such as (a) no-spiritual or (b) not immaterial or intangible. Still pretty vague. You might have to Google some words for that. Whereas on the new standard definition, you can see there, it is very descriptive. There's no need to pull out the dictionary. It covers everything, and this is just one example of how the standard definitions are beneficial. Another definition that is beneficial is software program. Currently, we do not have this defined in our municipal code. From a taxpayer's perspective, back in 1992 or 1986, when the definitions were first done, I believe our code was 1986, but the last time this project was undertaken was in 1992. Who remembers going to a store to purchase software in a box? I sure do. But now we download all of that, and so it's very confusing to taxpayers on what does this fall under? Is this tangible? What exactly is it? So by having software program defined in our code, it will alleviate some of that confusion, and that goes hand in hand with adopting the new tangible personal property definition. And so it all kind of builds upon each other, and ideally, we're going to have that gentleman down there, instead of all the question marks, he'll have a light bulb, and his questions will be answered really easy, and he's going to be able to file his taxes and not be confused or get frustrated when he does them. Are there any questions or comments?
Council, any questions? I'll ask one to just ask for clarification. You said that you had heard back from the Greater Inglewood Chamber of Commerce, and you weren't pleased with the results. I wasn't sure what you were referring to here.
The results we got did not include the number of surveys completed, and they said that they didn't have the turnout that they had desired. And so it just, for some reason, wasn't very successful over there, and so they weren't able to give me very much additional information on it.
Thank you. That's all.
Sure.
Councilmember Questa?
On that same note, in the presentation has them as neutral, but they did... If I understand correctly, they didn't really take a position either way. I think of neutral as a position as well. They didn't really state one entirely.
They didn't really state, and so we erred on the side of caution of neutral. I kind of considered that. They didn't give a opinion either direction.
Thank you. And with ACE, it looks like there were three responses of yes. Did they mention how many they sent out?
I believe it was given at the entire ACE meeting, which I want to say it's seven or eight members, but Mayor Protim might be able to give a more accurate number of the amount of members of ACE than I can.
I want to say...
Put your microphone up to you.
Sorry. I want to say there's five or six members, but there may have only been... Were they all there when you presented?
I believe so. We had about six-ish there when I presented back in October.
Thank you. So even on the high end, it would have been six. People would have received it, three or five. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? And at this point, what are you hoping for from us?
This was an informational discussion again. We're bringing it forth on February 19th.
Would you want us to reach out any further with the chamber or ACE to see if we get any more? I have a feeling this one is not as important as the second part that we were asking them to look at, which was more of an employee tax.
And the mandatory licensing.
Yes.
We can, but we have made several attempts. I mean, we've already made three attempts. I'm not certain that you would get any more.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you for your presentation and for all your diligence on it.
Thank you.
Next is our second item, which is the Citizen of the Year process. Interim City Manager Dorothy Hargrove is going to present to us and discuss this process for this next year.
Good evening, all. I have permission from Doug Coan to consider passing the crown on to another person. And last year, you had decided to put this off, but wanted to consider it again in 2019. In your packet is a proposed timeline, and it reiterates the nomination process and forms that were used two years ago. And we're looking for some council guidance on whether the process, the timeline, and the purpose is still what you had in mind before we take any further steps.
Councilmember Wink?
Thanks, Mayor. Without having had any follow-up conversation from 2018, I think since we agreed in 2018 to postpone the process, we should honor that commitment and do it now. And I believe that the timeline proposed that we've used before seems to have worked, so we should follow it and plan to celebrate another citizen coinciding with our May 13 city birthday recognition. So I'm for moving forward, certainly. I don't see any reason at this point to change anything.
I will add, if I may, that we will certainly... The call for nominations that's included in here, we will widely disseminate that information throughout the community so that everyone knows what's going on with the process, and we can get as much citizen participation as possible.
Any other questions, concerns? Mayor Protim Russell?
How did... How do you plan to disseminate the information, and how did we do it the last time?
I cannot answer how we did it the last time. Moving forward, we would make sure that we put it on the website. We could send it out in our email blast to various places. I would also recommend that we do sort of an attractive one-sheet information and leave it available in our facilities, the Malle Center, the Rec Center, the library, so that as many people as possible see it, and of course, here in the Civic Center Building.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Just so I'm clear on the procedure. So folks would nominate people, those nominations would then go to council? Council would make the determination as to who the citizen is?
Yes, yes. It's entirely a council decision.
One selected.
Yes. And we had, you know, ten... All the... The decision would be made at the March 4th study session.
Councilmember Wink?
Thank you, Mayor. As a newer member to council, certainly new regarding this process, what kinds of numbers of nominations have we received in the, like, past five years?
Haven't a clue. I'm not sure if anyone here...
I can speak to it.
Yeah, so we've done this differently the last time around, and what was really nice about the process is it was open. We had nominations. We had... I think we had several, but before that, we were doing it on our own. We were... Council was suggesting who to put in. We'd have two or three names. So this opened it up to citizens to recommend, which we felt was a much more... Just a much more appropriate way to do it because people recognize things differently than we might, and...
Would you say it went from two or three to, what, 10 or 20, or 60? I mean, just an idea.
I think there were four or five, yeah. It wasn't like we got 20. It was, you know, it's a little bit more than what we were bringing forward as council members.
Okay.
Yeah, which was very nice, and they were really well-formed, and it was just really nice to have. And I think it's, you know, it's hard to pick someone, but I think everybody's honored in the process, so...
Is... When is the next Citizen Magazine?
It's coming out later this week.
Okay. So that's not an option?
No, no. It would be too late.
The timeframe's too long between them. Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Great. It sounds like we're all in agreement with the process and the timeline, then.
We'll move forward accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the CEAC recommendation on code change for snow and ice removal, and here again, the City Manager Dorothy Hargrove to present on this.
I have the wrong piece of paper in front of me, but I think... I know what's going on. In your packet, we forwarded a letter recommendation from the Chair of the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee, asking City Council to give direction to the City Attorney's Office to consider a change to the municipal code relating to the removal of snow and ice in the city. And since that is a City Council decision, we're bringing it forward as presented by the committee for your consideration.
Thank you. Council, there are three changes being proposed. Maybe we should take them one by one. The first change is to move from 12 hours to 24 hours. Any thoughts on that? Any questions? Councilmember Wink? What are you going to do?
Yes. We'll pretend I've clicked on and clicked off. So, not to open a hornet's nest, but if we are currently reconsidering the management of the collective open space maintenance of the city, does the decision here impact that with EMER, these pieces? Or no? This is strictly?
No, this is...
Utilities, public works?
No, no. This is for individuals in the city to remove snow and ice from private property.
Okay. I think 24 hours is fair. So as a citizen and as a council member, I've actually thought of this a lot more since I became a council member in the fall of 2017, because my husband might at times say, "Oh, we'll shovel it," you know? And I say, "No." And my son, "We have to shovel it now." He said, "The snow is falling." I said, "We have to shovel it now. We have to be an example." But it's become very more and more obvious to me that there are certain life events that may prohibit some individuals from getting it in the 12-hour minute or window. Maybe you're working a little out of town, the shoveler, and you can't get back just quite in time, and you mean to, but... And sometimes my neighbor does ours, and we do our neighbor's, and sometimes that doesn't happen. So I don't know. It's 12 hours is... It's a little succinct when people work eight-plus hour days, and sometimes the snow occurs on eight-hour days. So I wouldn't want to go further than 24 hours, but I don't think it's unfair to extend it a little bit just because of life events. Maybe somebody's in the hospital, and your whole household is in the hospital for... Or hospice, or whatever it may be. I mean, there are all kinds of events that may prohibit us from managing our snow removal for 24 hours. We don't want to prolong it and have health and safety risks, like come back to the city and be sued because people are falling. But I'm open to the extension.
Councilmember Berantine?
If the snow... It says when the snow stops. So if the snow stops at 5:00 p.m., that means somebody has to have it shoveled by 5:00 a.m. That might be unrealistic, since it's already dark in the winter at 5:00 p.m. So I am a proponent of moving it to the 24 hours. I think that that's more reasonable. That's all I have.
Any other input? Councilmember Martinez?
I'm also comfortable with the 24-hour extension. I think 12 is a little rigid, so I think 24 hours makes more sense.
Councilmember Questa?
You bet. Thank you. So it's probably unlawful for any owner to surpass currently the 12, and we're proposing 24. What does unlawful currently constitute? What does that mean?
My understanding is that that would be a violation of our code, of code enforcement.
And as it stands now, do you know what that would result in?
The whole process of notice, notice of violation, that sort of thing.
So, but, and I guess that's my question, is would... Do you know where that penalty currently stands? Does that start as a warning typically?
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Sierra?
I do agree with moving it to 24 hours instead of 12.
Mayor Protim Russell?
I agree with moving it to 24 hours also instead of 12.
Right. So it looks like we've got a 24-hour agreement. Onto the second change, which is recommending stipulating the code a shorter time factor for the removal of weight. So it's shortened between five and seven days rather than, what was it before? 14 days? Is that it? Seven days to mitigate the violation, and then it's between five and seven. This one is a little bit fuzzier to me, but I'm all about trying to help get this through. Any comments about this one? Councilmember Wink?
So, given what we've just agreed on and will vote on later, so if we've given residents 24 hours to clear our sidewalks, and we haven't done so, I don't see why we should need more than seven days to mitigate a violation if a violation's been cited. Is that what I'm... Am I... Did I understand this correctly when I read it?
Yeah, I think you are.
Seven days, blah, blah, blah. Code enforcement officer will respond to it, done it, or owner with written notice. I think this should remain the same if we're moving 12 to 24. Member Russell has something to say.
Councilmember... Mayor Protim Russell?
I just... The reason for the second change that they're recommending would stipulate in this code a shorter time factor for the removal of snow or ice from the sidewalk. The recommended time from a door tag to a summon should be shortened to between five and seven days. This recommendation is designed to lessen the time that a safe hazard exists. So instead of giving them seven days, it's giving them five to seven days.
So let's give them fewer days then. If we're giving them more time to remove it, we give them fewer days to...
Yes.
Adhere to the policy if they've not done the...
Yes.
So yes, okay. If we've increased the time, then let's lower the time to... Yeah.
That's... I mean, that's how I read what they're suggesting. So...
Other comments or questions? I have a question with this, and so maybe it's just because there's some mistakes in this under the number two Inglewood Code Enforcement Advisory. The very last line, upon receiving the written notice, the property owner or resident then has another 21, and imparts these 14 days to mitigate code violations. So that's on the second go-around, right? So that there's a miss... Just a misprint, I'm sure, there? But it's seven days for the first one, and then another...
14 days.
14 days for the... Before then, it goes into... And then there's a 21. So I think this was confusing to me, and maybe, maybe we need to... I can't help you. Okay, you can't help me. I'm in favor of it being seven days or less. I don't know how you could say five or seven and leave that up to the code officer to decide? Is that what we're suggesting?
I think what they were suggesting, this was my take on it, it was either five or seven. Not just, I mean, shortening the time. So in other words, it was just, we could leave it at seven days. But then I think the third change... I think that's... The suggestion is that it would change it and not drag it out for 21 or 28 days.
Right. Seven days doesn't really change it, so going to five, it seems like that's the... So five would be fine with me. I mean, you've got to clear the sidewalks so people can get through. They have five days to clear it rather than seven. I'm... Is that... Councilmember Berantine?
I would agree with Mayor Protim that either the five or seven, but what the teeth of this is, is that somebody's going to be getting a notice after 24 hours, which is more reasonable than the 12, but it won't seem to be... As long as we're enforcing that piece of it and then kind of following up. In Colorado, the vast majority of snow melts within five days. However, the intention, I believe from listening to the meeting, is that we take hazards out, and there are some areas, especially on the north side, where it becomes an ice issue more than a snow issue. And so I would agree to going to the seven days... Five or seven, whatever you guys decide, but I would agree to going to that piece, and that's when people would get the... Would be expected to have the notice done, and then that would take another action if they follow it up in that timeline. So I agree. I think this is less an issue for snow than it is for the ice buildup in the areas that we have that become very serious issues and can go more than a month in some areas where we don't get that melting. So I'd really like to see that start being enforced because it becomes an impediment to people who are handicapped and elderly using being able to get around. So I like that they're doing this. So whether you do agree on the five or the seven is of little consequence, as long as it's being followed up on. That's all.
Councilmember Wink?
To Mayor Berantine's comment, snow slash ice, not managing the snow potentially result in ice, which is more longstanding and more detrimental to certain citizens... Well, all citizens, and some of us have lasting repercussions from succumbing to that. So I would like that follow-up maybe to be a little less than more.
Are you recommending five or six? In between?
Five.
Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. Five days makes the most sense to me. I think it... Since we're going to lengthen the duration of time, I think five is plenty.
Councilmember Questa?
I'm going to go with five as well. Or we go for consensus here? Are we taking these all as one? Are we going to take three separate?
I am trying to get each one separately, and then when we come to up with them, then we'll... They'll all be brought forward together, I would assume. Yeah. So councilmembers...
I'm okay with five days as well.
Okay. Great. All right. Onto the third one, which is the habitual offender remedy. They're suggesting that a person not be allowed to receive more than five violations in 12-month period. The sixth violation will go directly to a summons. Any thoughts about that? Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. I have a question about how many habitual offenders we have in this type of violation. I know depending on where your house faces, you have the problem of ice melting, and I've seen lots of folks around just even the last couple of days chunking out the ice patches. And so I wonder if there's a way to kind of... What we can do to help habitual offenders in this situation? If we need to come up with some kind of program, maybe volunteers to come help them? A lot of people have physical limitations and just maybe need a little help. So just wonder if... How many we have in the habitual offender category, and if we can go one step further to help these folks?
Is that a question that you're asking that we could get answered right now?
It's a question. I don't know that you... We have that information now, or you have that information, but...
I certainly don't have it at my fingertips, but I could try and find out unless you do.
And I... Commander Engler shared at one of the meetings that 95% of people that receive a ticket, there's voluntary compliance. So I think this is more addressed to... Part of the reason that I believe that this code was not being enforced is because it was not enforceable. Because by the time the snow falls, and if they don't do anything, then seven days, most of the snow is going to melt. And so I think that the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee is trying to make this code more enforceable. So I don't think that the habitual offender thing is problematic right now.
Councilmember Berantine might have been next.
Well, I think that we, by not enforcing these, and certainly these changes will help people who are elderly and handicapped, I am concerned about any... people who are elderly and handicapped, I am concerned about anything that becomes too punitive for people who may be in our community that are elderly or handicapped. And so, I believe that there, while there is, the vast majority have voluntary compliance, I want to make sure that anybody who is disabled or elderly, or is having some kind of physical issues, and I know that other communities have had like a snow brigade or something going on, I've actually heard in one community, not around here, but one community where the snow brigade was so good, people's kind of stopped shoveling, expected the snow brigade to do it. Well, the city isn't going to shovel, but at the same time, I don't want to become too punitive to people who may have health issues or something going on. I remember one time in a big snowstorm, we went around, they came out with cocoa for us. Actually, one of the people shoveling that day was the author of this, and they came out with cocoa. We were not aware that he had just had heart surgery, and we were just having fun and going around, we didn't even realize. So, if there's some way to identify that before it gets too far into a process where people are either, you know, in some way that we can do this where they're not embarrassed or put upon to try and make sure that we can help those people in our community without encouraging people to not, not do it, I'm not sure how we would do that, but maybe we could have that discussion. I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Questa.
Thank you. I hear somebody gets to six offenses in 12 months, and I wonder if they own a snow shovel. I would think that there's something going on there otherwise, and I would think up to that point, you've had, you mentioned a ticket, Mayor Protem Russell. I'm assuming when you say ticket, that's something on their door, that isn't, they need to go to a court or anything like that. I, I've got to think that by the six, when code enforcement has identified a home, that this is somebody that might need assistance, or for whatever reason can't get to that full shoveling practice by themselves. So, I think six, to me, is more than enough in this particular case. If you've gone six times, I, as we're mentioning, that's a hazard. I mean, that, to me, is a perpetual hazard if somebody's letting it go that month, that much. So, I would, I'm supportive of this. Thank you.
Councilmember Ciara.
So, what we're deciding tonight is just the language that we're going to update within the code itself. It doesn't really change how code enforcement enforces, whether it's going to be proactive or reactive, when they're taking this up with citizens. Is that my understanding, or?
Correct. I mean, but it is designed to make it more straightforward for the code enforcement to, to enforce and-
So, I guess what my, yeah, so I guess what my statement is, is that it's still going to be, it's, in order to, for the code enforcement officer to issue a warning, they still need to have someone call in to let them know that someone hasn't shoveled. They're not going to proactively go up and down the streets in order to cite any, any residents.
That would not be specified in the ordinance, it could be the request on an administrative level.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Russell.
I actually agree with Councilmember Questa, and I had a question. Do we still have a list of people who will shovel for people, used to you could call the valley center and get somebody to come and shovel for you?
My understanding is that hasn't been updated because it sort of fell off, and we didn't have enough volunteers to actually answer.
Okay. And, I mean, the truth is, most years, last few years, we haven't had that many snowfalls. But I do know that the ice, even now, is still an issue in a lot of places today, even though we've had a few days over 50, so. So, I, I think that, I don't necessarily want to be punitive, but six, six times, I do believe that people can identify their neighbors also and, and help their neighbors. So, thank you.
Councilmember Berentang.
To Councilmember Ciara's question, this council, no council previous to this has ever made any policy statement for code to be reactive. It is my understanding from the previous city manager that our code enforcement and our police enforce the law.
Any other comments? It looks like we're okay with the six times you're summoned. What currently do we do? It wasn't clear here.
I'm, I'm not sure that there's ever been a policy like this in ordinance. I mean, it's just taken on a case-by-case basis, but not cumulative. So, this is a new way of approaching it.
It would, they would end up in a summons if they didn't eventually-
Yes.
-shovel it, and it still stayed cold enough to keep it there, right? Okay. And that would take, that would take a long time of no sun and not very, so it's more getting at the frequent flyers of this than anything else and trying to set up some policy for that, yeah. I, I'm fine with that. I would prefer to set this third one around what we know is going on, and what we've seen, and what could help with it, than to just randomly pick five, four, or five, six, or eight. I, I agree with, you know, the comment that six seems like a lot in the course of a year. Certainly does to me, but it would be nice to know where, where we hit that threshold, and what the cases were that brought that about. Seems a bit unusual, so, I don't know. I would like to have a little bit more info for that, but it seems like growing, we can move forward with all three the way they are. I think that's true, right? We're ready to go forward? All right, great. So, I think we have some sense that you can bring something back to us at another point where we can re-discuss it and decide.
Good. Thank you. In the meantime, we'll hope for bright sunny days.
You're not going to get one tomorrow, I guess.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Would you like this to go back to Code Enforcement Advisory Committee for their review before inspecting council?
Well, that would be, let me ask folks here, the liaisons, do you think that's, it seems to me like they made a lot of progress in deciding something and gave it to us to decide. It's like it would be making it lengthen if we do that, but- Councilmember Berentang.
Point of order, could I ask whether that is the normal process?
If it is the normal process, where should go back? To code, then of course I would agree with that. I just don't know.
This is the first time since I've been here that anything's been brought forward, so I don't know what the normal process is. That's why I'm trying to clarify.
So, there isn't a process that's necessarily prescribed with, and they're, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Martinez.
I was just going to say, I don't think it needs to go back to them. I think, as I understand it, that these are the recommendations, and then it goes through the city attorney's office for language cleanup, and then it comes back to us to vote on, right? I'm comfortable with that.
I am too.
There are changes then from you, would we send it back maybe?
There are going to be changes from us. I mean, it's just the nature of rewriting a code. I think they're asking us to rewrite sections of the nuisance abatement code with the enforcement provisions, and that's something that has been an ongoing issue for this council, and we've really wanted to look at. So, plugging this language into the enforcement provisions of the nuisance abatement code is, is a little more complex than just adding in a line. So, there will be changes going back and forth.
For this?
Mm-hmm.
Not just the, okay. So, if you change something, then could we ask that question again? Because if we do change something, maybe it should go back to code enforcement.
Mayor Protem Russell.
Is the Inglis Municipal Code 11-3-2 on removal of ice and snow, is that part of the nuisance abatement code, or is that?
It's not part of the nuisance abatement code, but the way our code is written is most enforcement goes back through the nuisance abatement code provisions with the, the seven days to 21 days. It makes sense when you're doing a nuisance abatement that you put a door hanger on someone's door and give them seven days to get the trash, whatever, out of their yard. Putting a door hanger on someone's door and say you have seven days to get rid of snow and ice is a joke because snow and ice are going to melt. So, you can door hanger me all that you want to do, it's not going to make a difference. So, the nuisance abatement enforcement provisions are not across board applicable. They're also the enforcement provisions we use within the zoning code, and we're discovering as we're writing the short-term rental code and the ADU, that they're, they're just not giving the enforcement authority that citizens, I think, think the code enforcement officers have. They don't have that authority under the nuisance abatement enforcement provisions. So, to go back and rewrite the nuisance abatement enforcement provisions to provide for snow and ice separately is a little bit more complicated. It's a lot more complicated than it sounds. And it, it actually requires this council to look at how doing enforcement across the board. And I'm, I think that's a discussion that you need to have sooner rather than later, but I'm not prepared to bring all of that back to you tonight. It's just something that we've been struggling along with up to this point. Commissioner Protem?
Then, I think the process that we have for the committee has become problematic. So, I don't, I don't have anything else right now, but I think we need to figure this out.
Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I think this is a perfect statement and the perfect opportunity to weave these uncertainties and these to-do sort of clarifying moments into our proposed pause for the committee so that, such that once we are, as we are evaluating, and if, if we vote for it in the next meeting, as we're evaluating what has been and what should be, we can, we can think this, this is perfect, Mayor Protem. We can incorporate this and ensure that this very valuable committee to our board and commission staff can contribute the best to the, the city staff and to us and to the citizens. So, I think that's perfect time you mentioned this. Excellent.
Mayor Protem.
However, I would like to say that it's not just this committee that has that problem. It is every committee, and if we're going to put this committee on pause, then let's pause them all.
I don't like the, oh, sorry, city attorney. Let me clarify, and actually, this is in response to the first thing, Mayor Protem stated that she was concerned about the process. This has actually been a discussion, I think I've been to the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee meetings three times, and this is, everything they bring up has, has value, and it's valid, but we keep bumping into this same issue, and that is, the code was written 20 and 30 years ago, it's got to be updated, there's an expectation of enforcement that doesn't meet with the reality of 2020, and we can't, we can't just throw a couple new lines in and call it fixed. If we're going to change the enforcement provisions to make them applicable to snow and ice, we're actually rewriting a pretty significant section of the code, and it does need to be rewritten. I don't want you guys to step back from doing this. I'm not advocating that at all. I think we've been needing to step forward, and the first couple of projects that brought forward, doesn't matter what they are, they're going to be a little bit more complicated than anyone anticipated because we have to go back and build all the pieces of the code toward allowing us to make these choices. So, that's why I'd like to suggest at this point that this initial change, go back to Code Enforcement Advisory Committee for them to review, because I think in addition to them getting to see the changes and getting to work through the changes, which is helpful, I think it also gives them a broader understanding of, of all of the pieces of the code that have to be rebuilt to allow, to allow any changes. I think there's a perception that, that it's pretty simplistic and you can just whip it out in an hour, but, but you can't. So, my suggestion, at least on this first code change, is that we send it back to Code Enforcement Advisory Committee and let them review whatever changes come out of our office, and then upon their recommendation, send that back to you guys for your approval. Councilmember Berentang.
I would agree. I think maybe then it does need to go back to code enforcement. So far, what I've heard was that the reason that there's a conflict, a difficulty in enforcing this is because people will just ignore the law. They'll ignore the notice that's given them, and they'll, I don't know, or can't repeat exactly the words that the attorney, city attorney said, but I, I find that somewhat troubling, is that we're having a, we're confused about doing this because we expect that the citizens will just ignore the summons that they're given, or the notice that they're given, or that they'll blow it off. And so, maybe that needs to be a better discussion with counts, with the code enforcement board. I don't think that's confusing in there, and 20 and 30 years ago, they were able to enforce this. Part of the reason that this is coming forward is because we currently aren't enforcing what we currently have, and there's been some problems. Two councils or three councils ago, apparently, council made some determinations that certain things could be waived, or you could do it two or three times and then ignore it for the rest of the time. So, there was some miscommunication there that was never codified in some kind of ordinance or official policy. So, I don't think that it's the fact that it's confusing, or that the citizens would ignore any summons or law, or that we could have this particular piece be different for the enforcement of the snow and ice than we do for the dogs or for noise. So, maybe it should go back for better conversation since some additional issues have been brought up by the city attorney. So, concerning.
Thank you. I did not hear the city attorney say that there is any problem that you just mentioned. I think, I think what I heard her saying, and you could, I'd like you correct yourself in this, because that, I did not at all hear her say that this is not, that we don't enforce, and that that's a joke. What I think she was saying is, what I understood, is that, that something's going to come out, and so telling somebody you got, do it in seven days, it's going to be gone anyway. Do you want to, do you want to connect what you- No, that's exactly what I said, and, and I, I hope you're all hearing me very clearly. If we have one set enforcement provision that goes across all of the codes, sometimes it's applicable and sometimes it's not, and I think the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee have found a wonderful example where it's really not applicable. Of course, we want to give people seven days to clean the trash out of their yard before we issue a citation, but do we need to give them seven days to get the snow and ice off their sidewalk while children are trying to slip their way to school? We're trying to do everything with one hammer, and we need to go back and fix it, and I think Code Enforcement Advisory Committee are, are correct. We have to go back and fix that. It's just, it's not, when we fix that, we're fixing the entire enforcement provisions. And it's actually a discussion that we're having back and forth with planning and zoning right now as well. So, I think it's an opportune time to, to correct those provisions, but it's not going to happen overnight. I would need at least, at least four weeks, maybe six weeks to get out just the, the changes to the enforcement provisions we're discussing. I'd like to ask a question before we move on to them. If we were to do change one and change two, would that be a problem? Would that create a snowball effect, or is it just the third change of, of the six violations, and then you're summoned? Because it seems to me like going from 12 to 24 hours, does that really mess anything up at all?
No.
Could we do that in the meantime?
Yes.
And then on the second one, could we say you have five days to get it taken care of rather than seven, or is that where we start getting into- That's where we start getting into the enforcement provisions. All right. I would, I would like to see us at least move one of these forward that I think they're asking for, which would be the 24 hours, but I'll, I'll go ahead. Councilmember Wink, I think, or-
No, Mayor Protem was first. Thank you. So, when you, you answered, part of my question was how long it would take. When you have that done, is it possible that you could come to the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee and talk with them about the next step, or?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Wink.
I simply want to maybe make a closing statement that I, I appreciate what the city attorney has said in that these provisions need to be reviewed, and that it all seems logical to me, and forward moving for the city. I think it's extra work and, and extra benefit to the city that the city attorney is willing to go to the code enforcement group and share this new information and new guidance, so, yeah, I, I just think it's good, and I think we should move forward in this one. Thanks for the discussion.
In, in light of what we were just talking about, how are we in just moving the first one forward and leaving the other two? So, I know that's, Councilmember Questa first.
I think I'm the outlier here. I would not like that to go forward. The example, for instance, one example used, snow stops falling at 5:00 p.m., then the 5:00 a.m. to get it shoveled up. At the same time, that means you have 5:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. For instance, on our block where there's a lot of people walking to the park, where they're walking down that sidewalk, pushing the snow in, more likely to form ice. So, I personally would still stick with 12 myself.
Okay. That's helpful here. Councilmember Martinez.
I'm comfortable changing it for now from 12 hours to 24.
Councilmember Ciara, I mean. Councilmember Sierra, maybe?
Same here. 12 to 24 works for me.
Councilmember Wink?
12 to 24 hours works for me. I'm okay with moving it forward.
All right. We can bring that forward quickly. All right. Looks like we have fairly strong consensus. I, I will weigh in. I have trouble with 12 and 24 because of the very reason I have some people who are challenged ably in my neighborhood that worry about things not getting cleared up, but I think we try and help each other, so hopefully neighborhoods are keeping out, lookout for. That's my only concern, is that, that that gets done. I'm less worried about tagging people than I am about helping each other. But Councilmember Berentone, and then...
I'm not interested in moving it forward without all three being considered at the same time. I think they were kind of a package deal, so I would like to have the conversation happening with code enforcement until we change anything. So I don't want to piecemeal this like that, to change it at all. I'd rather leave it and have the conversation.
Mayor Protem?
Actually, I agree with that. I think perhaps we should discuss that with the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee, but also if we do move ahead with the 24 hours, that doesn't mean we're putting the other two things on hold. That means we're still moving forward with those, but not as quickly. The, the 24 hours would be immediate, and the, the other two changes would take maybe six weeks.
It'd be wrapped into the other ones that she's talking about, I think? Yeah. What I heard was a consensus on all three points.
Okay.
We can bring the snow and ice change back. That's just that one little section. We can rewrite that quickly and even have it back to you in two weeks. I mean, that's not a problem. It's rewriting the nuisance, it's rewriting the enforcement provisions, because they incorporate so many sections of the code. That was going to, is, we've actually already started on that. It's, it's complicated, because we have to go back through every provision of the code and figure out how will it impact this section? So that's why we need a little more time for that one.
Okay. But I mean, I don't want to create more work, bringing it forward one time and then going ahead with the rest of the work.
It's okay. I think bring it forward. All right. And we can discuss it again then and change our minds, right? All right. We're adjourned in here, and we'll re-meet in there in 7 o'clock for the regular, so you, regular, council meeting.